Hey, Linda. How's Linda doing?
Hi, Mr. Wilson. How are you doing?
Hey, Linda. How you doing?
Good. I thought you'd be next door. Looks like you're at City Hall. You're muted.
I didn't hear you, Linda.
I thought you would be next door and it looks like you're at City Hall.
Well, I'm tired of staying at home. I wanted to get out of the house.
It's too cold.
I'll stay at home tomorrow night.
Me too. Okay, here's my question. Somebody to answer. With that big, huge agenda being online in my email, how do I look back and forth from this Zoom meeting to that, to the things in that packet?
You should be able to minimize the Zoom window and have two things on your screen.
Ah, okay. See, at City Council, we, everything's printed, so I've never had to do that before.
Yeah, ours is all online because our packets just get so huge and have really detailed plans. And we're not taking paper copies because of COVID.
So are the agendas usually this long?
No, this one's pretty long.
Yes, I thought the same thing.
Yes, this, this one's a little long. I mean, we usually have a couple of long ones each year, but usually, most of them are not quite this long. We have, usually, we don't have three annexations on one agenda. That is unusual, so. I think it's just part of the holiday and people delay things until January and... So, no, it shouldn't, it's not usually like this.
I have started the recording of the meeting, and we are going live on Facebook in about one minute.
Welcome, Ms. Love. Sorry to initiate you with this type of meeting on your first go-around, but...
Well, I wondered if it was, they were all this long.
Well, tonight, it won't be long because there's the football game on tonight, and that's, that's more important, of course, isn't it?
So do y'all stay muted the whole, unless you want to speak or... Because we usually keep ours open.
The option is yours. If you're able to control the noise around you in the background, you can stay unmuted. If you do have any issues around you or things start going off, I have the ability to mute you if you opt to not mute yourself, but never, of course, when you're speaking or deliberating on an item.
Okay.
We are now live on Facebook.
So go ahead and get us started.
If you could give me one more minute, I'm now getting a strange error message, so hopefully I'll be able to resolve this in just a second. Mr. Chairman, I almost didn't recognize you. You've got a new friend around your head, around your face.
My daughter hates this.
John, I didn't recognize you at first either. Hello, though.
Hello, Linda. It's so good to have you join us on this.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here.
Before we go live, I need you to do something, just a little ceremony. Raise your right hand and repeat after me, "I, Linda Love..."
"I, Linda Love..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...not to quit the planning commission after I see the January agenda." You joined us on a bond, but we're glad to have you here.
I did think that was, I, I had to ask if every agenda is this long. My goodness.
This is an exception.
That's good to know.
So, Mr. Chairman, we are live with audience in attendance and live on Facebook. So we are ready to go from the technical front.
Very good. We'll go ahead and get started. We'll, we'll open this meeting of the Gallatin Municipal Regional Planning Commission Work Study Session. The only vote we'll take tonight is a vote to hold the meeting by electronic means and a roll call. So let me read this quick message pursuant to the Governor's Executive Orders Number 16, Number 34, Number 51, Number 60, Number 65, and Number 71, and the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19. Members of the Planning Commission will participate by electronic means, and the meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the members and citizens of Gallatin. Mary Ann, if you will, please call the roll, and those answering respond present and approve, if you approve of holding the meeting electronically.
Chair Prier.
Present and approve.
Vice Chair Harris.
Present and approve.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Wilson, I thank you.
Ms. Love.
Present and I approve.
Dr. Organe. Mr. Strouther. Ms. Hibbler.
Present and approve.
I'm sorry, did I hear Dr. Organe? Mr. Wilson.
Present, present and approve.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it's five zero.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Before we get started with going through the items, I do want to officially welcome Ms. Linda Love, who is Council's new representative on the Planning Commission. Linda, thank you for joining us, and we look forward to having your involvement and participation.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Welcome.
So we'll go ahead and get started with the, going through the items. What is the first item? Item number one is the Bowles Farm Plan of Service and Annexation Discussion. Jillian, do you, do you have this?
Yes, and Items One, Two, and Three are all for this property, so I was going to go ahead and do them all together.
Please do.
Yes. So this is the property located at Red River Road and Highway 109. These items first appeared before you at the December Planning Commission meeting. The applicant has made some changes following discussions with staff. Fully revised drawings will be resubmitted later this week, although we do have some revised drawings this evening to show you. And we will be presented to you at the following Planning Commission meeting in two weeks. Next slide, please. This first item is for the annexation of approximately 655 acres located to the north and south of the new Albert Gallatin Extension. This property is contiguous to the city limits. Within the last couple of years, multiple rights-of-way within this area were annexed into the city. Next slide, please. Now, this is for our Comprehensive Plan Amendment to the Gallatin on the Move 2020 Plan. This is Item Two. Next slide. Next slide, please. The applicant requests approval to change the character area designation of a 256-acre portion of the Bowles Farm from the North Gallatin Emerging Business Park Character Area to the Emerging Walkable Community Character Area. The change is requested to support the rezoning and the PMDP request for these properties. The portion of Emerging Business Park Character Area to be retained is proposed to be rezoned to be PBP, which is Planned Business Park. This was one of the items we did see in December. We have held a public hearing for this items so far. As you can see from the exhibit on your screen, the southern portion of the Bowles Farm is already designated as the Emerging Walkable Community Character Area. The expansion of the Emerging Walkable Character Area will support additional residential and commercial development that will be an extension and also support a future business park in the preserved 90 acres in the blue there. Next slide, please. Next slide, and next slide. The third item tonight is for the rezoning in the PMDB for the Bowles Farm made up of 655 acres. Next slide, please. The applicant proposes to rezone 435.61 acres to R8 PRD, Planned Residential Development, 132.92 acres to MU Mixed Use, and 86.93 acres to PBP Planned Business Park. The residential portion of the property, which you see predominantly in the yellows and the oranges, will include various residential housing types, such as single-family, single-family attached, and townhomes. The portion of the residential area to the south of Albert Gallatin will be an active adult living community, as well as have five large estate lots along Red River Road for continuity. The MU zoning, which is predominantly along Highway 109, will include over 1 million square feet of commercial and office development and up to 900 residential units, including multifamily. The PBP zoning will be prepped for a future business park development, and that's in the red. A large portion of Floodplain is located along the eastern property boundary. Most of this area will be preserved in, as open space and will be used for amenity and park area. The applicant has prepared a presentation this evening, and we'll talk to more of the particulars of this development. This is kind of just your intro, and I'm happy to turn it over to them to discuss this.
All right. We have a representative for the applicant present or online?
Yes, yes, sir. This is John Haas with Edge, and we've also got Jim Harrison with Civil Site here.
All right.
I don't know. I don't know who's running the PowerPoint, but I think Jim wanted to say a couple of things real quick before I took over.
Go for it, John. This is Jillian, and I have the PowerPoint up for you when you're ready.
Okay, yeah, I see that. Is Jim Harrison on the line? Could you give him a, a, a minute?
Yeah, Jim, your line's been unmuted.
Thank you, Josh. Yeah, this is Jim Harrison. I just wanted to take a minute to talk about who's on our team and really just kind of introduce our team. Culture Land is our development. We are just really excited about the, the level of experience and quality that they bring and what they've done on previous developments. They, they, they do a job of really making sure that these are well-planned. This is a large contiguous site, which creates opportunities for that. But also, they sell lifestyle, and I think you'll see that as part of the presentation that John's going to lay out. John Haas, who's going to jump in immediately following me, is, it, it just does an incredible job of blending together mixed-use, business park, residential, active adult, which you're going to hear more about, as well as open space and making sure those are well-designed to not only bring a lot of practicality to it, but also a quality of placemaking that, that just, just creates a phenomenal plan. So I just wanted to say that upfront because we're really excited about and what Edge brings and Culture. The right players are at play on this. Of course, we're working on the engineering along with some other very highly qualified consultants. So with that, I'm just excited, as a resident of Gallatin, I'm excited that they're bringing this to our city. With that, John, you got it.
Okay, thanks, Jim, and, and, and thank you, commissioners, for, for hearing us tonight. I know we had a, a brief presentation at the last Planning Commission meeting that it was, really didn't, didn't give us a chance to present some of the information that we had available, and I hope to do that tonight. Very sensitive to the agenda and the kickoff that will be happening in a couple hours, so I'm going to try to keep this to about 10 minutes, but certainly if there's any questions, interrupt me during or after or before, you know, whatever makes the most sense for you all. This is really, we're here to serve you and get you as much information as we can so you can make the best-informed decision that you can. And in, in that spirit, I did want to let everyone know that we do have a community meeting scheduled where we will share this information again, along with some additional exhibits for Thursday, January 21st, at the Hilton Garden Inn on Tule Poplar Drive from 5:30 to 7:30. And you'll, you'll see there will be some announcements in the paper and some signage and so forth. But I wanted to let you all know, most importantly, if you had additional questions, you're welcome to come to that event. That 5:30 to 7:30 is meant to be, given the COVID restrictions, we are going to do a, a small group sort of walkthrough on your own, so it's a drop-in meeting, but there will be folks there to answer your questions, and, and there will also be a question box to drop things off. So we're, we're trying to find, follow protocols as much as we can and still get our outreach in. If you can go to the next slide. A, a lot of this Jillian touched on, 655-acre site, all controlled by the Bowles family. Our proposed plan has approximately 27% of the site in open space. That's roughly 177 acres. You know, the, the city leaders over the years have done a wonderful job, especially in the last 10 years, putting the city of Gallatin in a strong financial position. I think they've also made some wonderful decisions from the planning standpoint with the addition of the Hatton Track Extension and identifying this property as a potential for a bit of a gateway into the city, but also a potential for that Emerging Business Park and this Emerging Walkable Community. So our land use changes are moving some lines around. We're not proposing any new land use designations. We're just proposing that those uses get shifted a little. And really, with the exception of a handful of uses, then the Emerging Business Park uses, most of those uses are permitted within the Emerging Walkable Community. When I talk about office and retail, some R and D, it's, it's the heavier, more blue collar that, that is not permitted. And, and I think in discussions up to this point, we're, we're anticipating this is more of a research and development business park. So even though there's this shift in acreage, we really don't feel like it's a huge shift in terms of the potential for the business park. Existing zoning, R40 and RR, there's a, a small little corner piece that's R40. The majority of the property is rural residential and is in the county. A little more than 65% of the 655 acres is single-family residential. Of that 435 acres, 133 of that is open space. Mixed use is about 20% of the site, and as Jillian mentioned, primarily, well, exclusively located along the Highway 109 frontage, and then 14 to 15% of the site for the Planned Business Park. And again, we really see the mixed use and the Planned Business Park melding together, particularly with the office components. We can switch to the next, please. So I, I want to just touch on a couple of things quickly here. As I had mentioned, you know, a community of this size and, and Culture Land, what, what we're attempting to do here is really create a cradle-to-grave community. And what I mean by that is the opportunity for young families with, with housing opportunities that can raise children here, take advantage of the amenities, you know, go off to college, come back, get a job here, move up to a, another, another home price point, and then at some point in their life, move again, and then at some point in their life, move to the active adult. So really, what we're offering here is a variety of housing options. And then, of course, proximity to a number of amenities, most notably the natural resources and that are within the open space that we've been able to maintain. The, about 65% of the site is dedicated to active adult, and that's a 55 and over community. You see it there. Those three arrows, everything south, basically, south of Hatton Track that is not colored blue is in the active adult. That's about 300 acres. That'll also represent about 60 to 65% of our lot count, our residential lot count will be there. That active adult will be gated. It will have its own HOA. And we, we'll talk briefly here in a few minutes about some of the advantages of active adult compared to more traditional in terms of some burdens that, that, that housing can sometimes put on a community. The remaining residential is adjacent to Langford Farms and sort of wraps around a residential district. One thing in working with staff, there are a couple of key things here, changes since the last time we put this plan in front of you. One thing is, we went back and worked with engineering and planning, and we have determined that the three intersections that exist as part of the construction that is happening on the Hatton Track Road right now, we will utilize those intersections where, so we've reduced that from four to three. The other thing that we've done is done a continuous lane from the off-ramp of 109 into that mixed use. And I, I don't have control of the pointer, but you can see that there. So that does away with that first intersection. We, we all felt that was a great compromise. Another key element here in working with staff and really to address traffic and on Hatton Track and the potential for signalization or lack of potential for signalization is we have provided a connective, connective route from Old Douglas Road through Langford Farms, through our single-family detached. And then, once you get to where the townhomes are, you've got, really, you've got three options. You can use any one of those intersections to get to Hatton Track, and then that would in turn, that connector road would go over to Red River. So right now, that connection doesn't appear on any major thoroughfare plan in our future, any future traffic plan. We think it's one of the highlights of the site and one of the advantages of one developer looking at the entire property is it gives us the opportunity to add something that benefits the community in terms of a north-south connector that isn't Highway 109 in, in close proximity here for these neighborhoods and the neighborhoods around it. That open space that we mentioned, 177 acres, you can see a lot of that in green throughout the site. What's important to us is that the open space isn't leftover open space. It really became the framework for the plan. And when I say that, it's because we are protecting the, the major natural resources on the site. Those trees that you see in the darker green within the, the green space, that's really the only trees that are left on-site, the site. that's really the only trees that are left on site, the site, the 655 acres have been farmed. So we are preserving a huge majority of the tree cover on site, certainly paying attention to all the buffers on the wet weather conveyances and the streams, as well as the greenway and dedicating the easement for the greenway to the to the east. If we can go to the next slide, please. This is just a breakdown of entitlements that we are requesting. I'm going to go into some things here in a minute. As Jillian mentioned, you know, the breakdown of those units. I would, I I want to at least put this out there that it's unlikely and that all of these entitlements could ever be built on the project. And it's intended that way because it's mixed use. We are trying to build a plan with staff and with you all that is flexible. And when I say flexible, a plan like this could take anywhere from five to 15 to 20 years to fully build out. We want the plan to be as flexible as possible to respond to the market. And and we think we've done that and and we have attempted to do that with providing some architectural restrictions, some development restrictions that protect everyone involved. But it gives us that flexibility. So these are maximum entitlements. I would I would not anticipate that all of these maximas maximums would be would be met. If we can move on to the next slide. So Jim mentioned Coulter Land and them having experience. I think when we first started working with the Bowles family, we really looked at the site and said, you know, it's highly unlikely that a whale is going to come in here and purchase all 655 acres in one fell swoop and and look at this as a master developer. It's probably more likely that you could have four or five or even more developers that want to take down the project. And I mentioned last time they that the Bowles family have been approached multiple times for builders in particular, looking at, you know, 20 to 30 acre sites. Will you cut off this chunk for me? Will you will you give me this piece here? A C store had approached them. They didn't want to do that. So we wanted to develop a plan that, again, had that flexibility. But but it could work with a whale, but it could work with a whole bunch of great white sharks also. Fortunately, during that process, before we were even wrapped up with the Bowles family, we were in some preliminary meetings with staff, Coulter came to the table. What I'm going to do is just flip through here real quick of a project that is very similar to the Bowles Farm. This is a project in Palm Beach Gardens, Florida. If you can switch to the next slide. It is 681 acres. You see there is a little over 3 million square feet of office and biotech, R and D, hotel rooms, retail and residential units. So a a great mix of uses, very similar to what we're proposing on Bowles. And if you can just sort of flip through these next several slides, you know, the retail town center with with multifamily and proximity, you see some of it's built out. They're about five years into the process, I believe. So some of it has been built out, but the attention to detail, the quality. If you can stop right here for one second, I do just want to mention, Jim had mentioned lifestyle. And that is one thing that as we discuss this community with the Bowles family, we had thoughts of an active adult just simply because it's a market segment which is growing in Tennessee. But maybe not one at this scale. And what one at this scale allows you to do is produce an amenities package, which is unmatched in the market. I'm I'm not suggesting that this is the exact amenity package, but they do nice amenity packages throughout for the active adult, which will be part of that access as well as for the traditional single family. But the active adult is where that main amenity is. And, you know, also has social directors. And so they really do a good job of programming those spaces and utilizing those spaces and building community, particularly within the active adult. If you can go to the next slide now. Here, you're just seeing some of the the built environment there. Office, of course, you know, you see the trails and some art instituted fountains, all those elements that start to form a community, if you can can keep going. Corporate headquarters. Act, you know, assisted living, usually a lot of times we'll see assisted living come in and adjacent to the active adult. Hotels with visitors and office and research, all of that is part, as well as healthcare and hospital is part of that out on development in Palm Beach Gardens. So again, very fortunate, if you can go to the next slide, I think that might be. Yeah, back to this, great. Very fortunate that we've got one developer that's that's looking at this. As I mentioned before, really interested in this mix of uses and and linking those uses with a walkable network of sidewalks and trails and redundant vehicular access. And and when I say redundant, I mean a variety of options to access the site. What that does is it helps with traffic. Again, options and flexibility are key for for a plan of this size and a community of this size. The other thing is the buffers in between the uses. And I'm not talking about in between the the single family residential uses, but between the planned business park and the mixed use park, we've incorporated buffers into there and a lot of times use the natural tree canopy to do that. I think, again, that that really helps build that framework for the overall community. And then lastly, I'm just going to flip through some slides here of some proposed architecture. And I think what you're going to see, at least what we're trying to show, is that our thought is is to provide an architectural vernacular that is complementary to Gallatin and to the square in Gallatin. We do not want to compete with the square. We think the square will be a great attraction to a number of these residents. We're going to have a lot of the same uses, but we want to build from that and build upon that with more of a complementary style architecture. So you'll see a variety of residential product types here. Particularly, you know, we're looking at at townhomes, condominiums. What's important, and if you stop on this slide for one second, is what's important here is when we get into the higher density residential types, that we've put elements in place in the in the PD plan, the PMDP, that control the scale, the size, the location of these buildings. So keeping the scale of those buildings in context and the vernacular in context of that single family so that buildings don't necessarily, you 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 won't see a building with, you know, 150 units in it type of thing. If we've done things like along 109 said that the short side of the building, there's a maximum building width that can front on the 109. So you wouldn't see a traditional garden style apartment just lined up on 109. Again, those are the things that allow for flexibility, but control the quality. And really, looking at the architecture and how it interfaces with the office and the mixed use that 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 style stays in place. And I think when you see the next couple of slides, you can go on now. That that style, again, you start to see that blend a little more contemporary, a little less historical or southern traditional. And and I think that's on purpose. The idea is that, again, we don't want to recreate the square. We think the square is a great amenity. We want to provide another option. So you'll see these mix of uses in different ways at the office and business park. Again, even some of those uses that you may think as part of that office business park, which at times don't necessarily speak from an architectural standpoint and a fenestration with windows and so on, looking for ways to implement architectural interest into those structures is important to us. And that's been built in. So like I said, our community outreach is coming up. We have had some feedback, there was some feedback online. Certainly, we know that a community and project of this size, traffic, infrastructure costs, schools and out of control growth is something that's going to come up every time. We just want to try to tell you how we've begun to address that. And we'll, of course, look for more input at the community meeting. But we have done a traffic study, submitted preliminary traffic study and agreed, you know, that turn lane, intersection signals, potential roadway widening paid for by the developer as part of the project will be part of this process. I think it's also important to point out, as I mentioned before, the city leaders in the last 10 years foresaw this with Hatton Track and got the state to pay for that road has really encouraged development of this type and given us this opportunity to come in here with one developer. We've got a vehicular network that creates that north-south connection, which helps with the traffic. Of course, sidewalks and trails and really a lot of these uses, the ideas that you don't have to leave the neighborhood for those neighborhood conveniences, those standard everyday conveniences. The active adult, as I said before, is one thing that no one anticipated. And in our mind, it's a huge bonus because for a couple of things, it's less of an impact to schools. It is less of an impact to traffic because their peak hour, their their travel times are completely different than a traditional single family house. And and you know, someone who's out working, you know, business hours, eight to five business hours. And we've got data to support that. So the active adult and it representing, you know, nearly 65% of that single family residential is is a big bonus in our mind. The utility infrastructure is readily available in close proximity to the site, if not onsite. Again, we talked about the limited limiting the impacts to schools with that active adult component. The master developer, single master developer gives us an opportunity, and this kind of ties to the next comment there about infrastructure improvements. By having a master developer, we can lay out a plan that puts infrastructure in advance of the next phase. So infrastructure is out in front of development as opposed to development or infrastructure trying to catch up with development. I think you see in a lot of communities, when you get those 30 acre single family residential neighborhoods, that the neighborhoods get built and they have some road impact fee or some dollar amount for road improvements that don't happen for another five, 10, 15 years. In this case, that these improvements are being made with development. You know, the economic development experts have told us and and we agree that the proximity of these mixed uses and the variety of housing types gives this business park a competitive advantage. And that's important because there are a number of business parks within the middle Tennessee region. And this one, in terms of, you know, one of the first questions you get out of corporate relos that are, where are my people going to live? What kind of amenities do they have? This has a variety of housing types. And and again, that's in order to build flexibility, but also make the business park more attractive as an economic impact tool. The open space, very proud of that. And, you know, 27% of open space and preserving those natural resources. And of course, the public greenway, another highlight of the plan. And the next slide, I think that's about it. I hope I did okay on my time. We're here to answer any questions and be happy to go back to any slide or bring anything else up we need to. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, John. I think I saw Nick Tuttle on on the meeting. Will engineering weigh in with some comments or would you care to weigh in with some comments?
I'd be happy to, Chairman. This is Nick Tuttle, the city engineer. And I'm going to have to jump off the the call at some point later on this evening. Aaron Hickson will be able to step in and and offer some comments for engineering. But as far as this development goes, as as John and and Jim were were already mentioning earlier, we have been working with Edge and Civil Site Design Group very closely. And I'm sorry for my dog. He hasn't he hasn't moved for an hour and now as soon as I turn on the microphone on. But but we have been working with those folks quite a bit over the past two months particularly. And 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 I do feel like they have, they've they've made some concessions and and done a lot of things to to work towards what what we hoped to see here. And and I really think they
Nick, we've lost you.
I don't know if you can on the road. I'm sorry.
I've got a question before Nick.
You guys still hear me?
We can hear you now, Nick, but we you cut out a little while back. You were addressing points of connection, I think.
Right, and so let me just kind of pick up here. Yeah, along Albert Gallatin Avenue and particularly there at the interchange with 109. At this point in time of the development, we really don't know what what's intersections may or may not be signaledized, what which ones of those may warrant. I think the developer has done a really good job of trying to to spread the traffic out and make a lot of connections, some interconnections there so that we can hopefully prohibit or 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 keep from having multiple traffic signals warranted along that that new roadway. We're we're hoping and planning for that to be maintained as more of a bypass for the northern part of Gallatin. So, you know, it's going to serve the purpose of of access for this community, but it'll also be that bypass road for others that are are moving around the north side of the community. Red River Road is is fairly lightly used by the development. And, you know, we do have a lot of questions still around that that intersection of Red River and 109. And then, of course, whether this development is accessing that. We believe that that it'll work fine, but making sure that it's lining up with other developments that may occur also to the south of Red River Road are are some things that we're still trying to to work with them on and looking into. And 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 really, I think the only other thing that that we had a concern with and and maybe John and Jim may want to dive a little bit deeper into this, but the active adult neighborhood, it is planned to be an all private roadway development. In other words, they they already said that it was gated. And I do not recall the number of units within that development, but at at this point in time, they are showing two points of access for that development. And I believe they would like to have a third point of access, just be emergency access only. And, you know, we, as we've talked with them about it, we we have encouraged maybe a third full access point. But I think they have some particular things, concerns on their side that that they may want to go a little bit further into. But but really, that's that's probably our biggest thing here. I think they've done a really great job of of configuring the roadway network to to serve this development, but also the existing neighborhood and residents of Gallatin.
Nick, I have to you have to forgive me, there were parts of what you said that came in and out. We were having a little problem with the out. We were having a little problem with the connection. They have three points of, three connection points. Is engineering good with the three connection points? Are you asking them to reduce that?
Are you referring to the points along Albert Gallatin Avenue?
Yes, sir.
No, we're not asking them to reduce it. Matter of fact, we prefer the three because they are spaced well and within a good recommendation from TDOT, from the original design. And so we are very happy that they're trying to utilize and are utilizing those existing cuts that are there. And we did allow some, effectively the right in, right out. It's a fourth access point for the development that, and Mr. Haas was trying to explain a little bit of that. They're near the interchange of 109 and Albert Gallatin, where there's a lane that will essentially be built to allow a right movement into the development that is free flow. And if you do get off coming from 109 going south, you would be able to also enter that lane. There would be a weaving space there, just like, you know, any other, well, just like, say, further south on 109, if you're on 109 between Nashville Pike and Long Hala Pike, where you have that weaving area to enter 109 from Nashville Pike, or if you're leaving 109 and going off there. So no, we're in agreement with really everything that they have proposed along the Albert Gallatin Avenue extension. And we think they've done a really good job of planning that out and creating some multiple points of cross-access off of the roadway.
All right. Let me just ask one last question of you, Nick, while we have you before you jump off, and then I'll stop talking and let everybody else have a chance. Just in your opinion, how many signalized intersections, signalized intersections would this cause along Hatton Track at full buildout, in your opinion?
I'm definitely still guessing, but I suppose it is a fairly educated guess at this point. I think that we would see a signalized intersection at the point where the planned business park area, so really that first full access point, I would expect to see a signalized intersection there. And my hope, and I don't think I'm being too optimistic, is that we would avoid any other traffic signals as we get further away from 109. I am a little concerned that we may need to have a traffic signal on Red River Road there where the commercial, that mixed use, yeah, right there. That's the one that worries me the most. And you know, Red River Road is not exactly, you know, a major highway at this point in time. And so that's the one that really worries me the most. But along Albert Gallatin Avenue, I think they're at that first point of access for the development is our most likely traffic signal, and I think it may be our only one.
All right. Thank you, Nick. Do other members of the commission have any questions for Mr. Haas or for staff?
Yes, I got one in this concerted Red River Road.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr.
I know that road has, that road has no shoulders. And I'd like to see at least shoulders put on that road, at least through that section. I like everything else about the plan, but I think something needs to be done to Red River.
I agree. Mr. Wilson on that?
Any other questions or comments?
Question, just really more of confirmation. So the active adult neighborhoods, those would all be gated sections and the roads would be maintained by the HOA? Is that correct?
Yeah, I think you can still hear me. Can you also hear me?
Yeah.
This is John. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Yeah, John, you asked my question on the traffic signal. So it's good. It's a, overall it's a good-looking, good-looking project.
Mr. Chair, this is Josh King. We've been working with the city's Economic Development Office, and James Fenton, representing that office, would like to speak on this item.
Okay, just one moment. Linda, were you wanting to speak?
I did have several things to say, several questions, but James can go ahead and make his comments first. Thank you.
Sir, James, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. This is clearly a major addition to our community and has been looked forward to. Obviously, the $35-plus million that has been put into the road to open this up for development. So as you have stated, this is not unexpected. I think it's important that we look to make sure that there's a sufficient amount of that space. And I've talked to the developers. So we're on the same page here. I think the demarcation of a business park versus mixed use, you know, is something we have to look at. We just need to make sure that we address what the original intent that allowed the MPO to fund that road. 60% of this land was designated for a business park. And that percentage is not expressed in this development plan, I mean directly. But I think what they have done to allow that kind of development is there. This body just has to make a decision as to whether or not what is presented here really represents what was originally planned for this area. I'm excited about this. You know, as you know, everyone knows that's listening right now, Gallatin is growing exponentially. And we need to make sure that we have everything in place that allows that growth to occur. So Councilman Love, tell us what you think.
Thank you. And Mr. Haas, thank you for that, for that presentation. This is my first night on planning commission. So I'm new to this, although I've been on city council for four years. One of my questions is, since this is, most of the residential is active adult, how do you limit that to that age group? When you sell this, I mean, is there some kind of a way that you, a qualification that people meet? And that's, I'm sure that's an easy answer.
You know, I'll say it as easy as I can. I think, you know, maybe one of the representatives from Coulter wants to jump on, but there are state and federal laws that have to be followed to restrict those lots. And essentially, those are along the lines of, you know, at least one person of the ownership in the household has to be over 55. And you can limit children within the community because it is private and it is gated. And you can do things in addition to that, like the amenity is not permitted, children aren't permitted. So you do things from a legal standpoint, but then you also do things within the planning and design standpoint that discourage someone from living there also. But it is, you know, I think the percentages, 80, 85% have to be, you know, over that 50. So you can't say 100% exclusive, everyone in this community is 55 and older. But you can control that active adult component to the point where it becomes an active adult community. If that doesn't answer your question, I think what we can do is, I don't know, I know Jim Harvey may be on the line from Coulter, or Pat Chisholm from Coulter that might be able to answer that, if you all want to chime in.
Did you say that children are not allowed at all?
No, in the amenities. So what, you know, in today's environment, certainly, you know, the community has the ability to, you know, you've got people taking care of grandchildren. And you know, there's sometimes unfortunate events. And so there are exceptions to that. I don't know that there is a clear cut, no children, no school age children under the age of X are not permitted. They will not be permitted to use the amenity. But in terms of living within the community, there's an HOA board and there's exceptions there.
My concern really is, as you can probably tell, is about schools and putting a need for new schools in that area. So how many total residences will there be?
Entitled, from a single-family standpoint, there are, I'm looking, going back to page four. So, single-family detached, attached, which are villas and townhomes, we're requesting 1,390 units. Of those, about 65% or 800 approximately will be the active adult.
I'm sorry, 65% of 1,390 will be the active adult?
Yeah, 60 to 65%. It's about 800 units.
800 that are active adult?
Yeah, approximately.
When you talk about Red River Road, council has already had concerns about that road and the narrowness of it and the high number of new development that's being put in near there. So that concerns me for Red River. I know that you just mentioned one entrance or exit onto there, but you know, I don't know how you control how many people would be actually using it. I think I saw that there's also, and is this right, that there's also an entrance or exit onto Old Douglas Lane?
That's in an adjacent development, Langford Farms.
Right.
So we connect to Langford Farms.
Okay. When we approved Langford Farms, there was a lot of questions and not very many people were happy because of the flooding that's already goes on over in that area. And because of Old Douglas Lane being such a really narrow old road. Has anybody looked into the additional flooding that would be going on or the additional cars going on to that old road?
You know, in general, the preliminary traffic study looked at a wider regional impact. So, you know, Old Douglas Road was considered in terms of connections. Now, I don't have the data right in front of me, but I can respond to you later in writing with some of those numbers. But our projections are that primarily with the connection to Hatton Track and the 109 that, you know, particularly our, our community will be going in that direction, not out to Old Douglas. That connection, obviously, those connection points were there as part of the approved Langford Farm subdivision. And staff has asked us to connect and follow that connection, which we feel, again, in the overall interest of traffic is a good thing. In terms of flooding there, we are doing everything, we will do everything as we enter, as the PMDP is hopefully approved and we get to FMDP, we will follow all the state and local guidelines and rules and laws in regards to water quality and detention to prevent any, you know, additional flooding and hopefully be able to address some of the other issues. One of the things about the ability of this development, and you can see it on this plan, if you can see the same screen that's in front of me, if you can see the master plan, if you look at Langford Farms and where their green space is, it's all on the perimeter, which is one way of handling stormwater. Our green space is throughout and in fingers throughout the community, which is a whole nother way to handle stormwater. And so we think by doing that, we can, again, as opposed to multiple smaller developers, we can look at it on almost a regional basis and really look at the whole 655 acres together.
Nick, are you still here?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you remember when that was brought up about the flooding over there where Langford Farms was
Yes, ma'am. Yeah.
Do you believe that these new homes will only make that worse over that way, or can it be controlled?
So first, the traffic side, and I think Mr. Haas addressed it. I fully expect that more Langford Farms residents would be passing through this development than the folks from this development going out into Langford Farms and going out Old Douglas Road. So I think it's actually going to take traffic off of Old Douglas.
That would be a good thing.
Yeah. And that's the reason why we wanted these stub outs from Langford Farms in the first place, so that we could make sure that those residents had another way out of there besides Old Douglas Lane. As far as the stormwater goes, actually, that separation between that, where it says R8, single-family detached in the planned business park, that green line that runs through there, there's actually a stream there and all of this development actually drains into itself. And so it does not, it doesn't drain back to the creek across Langford Farms. And so this development would not contribute really in any way to more flooding along Old Douglas Lane. It's actually going on down to East Camp Creek, another way. So kind of the hill or the top of the hill is on Langford Farms and that divide moves back towards this development. So that's, that's good news, too.
Okay, thank you, Nick. And that makes
I'm not there right now, baby. But let's talk about it.
So I thought a question out there to Mr. Haas. You know, the city made a significant investment into this road, Hatton Track, with two goals. One is to bring, you know, to foster economic development, and also to provide connectivity from the west side of Gallatin to the east side, which is a real issue for us. And that's all our concerns really are focused, my concerns anyway, are focused on those two points right there. I know that in the past, for developers, commercial, on a large development, the commercial portions of the development somewhat subsidize the residential portions. Maybe COVID flipped that model upside down, for all I know. But my question to you is that if you were allowed more mixed use or PBP, Planned Business Park, and it were to, the invitation was for you to extend it to where the R8 areas, the single-family attached and the townhomes, would that be appealing to you as the developer or unappealing?
And I don't have this data, but I think I'll be happy to bring it next time. When we did an original study for the Bowles family and the 400 acres of planned business park, essentially equated to, you know, you can assume easily 10,000 an acre. So 4 million square feet of office space and business park space, based on, you know, the market that has happened over the last 15, 20 years in Gallatin, that might be a 25, 35, 40-year takedown on that space. So we thought it was way too much acreage is really where we approached it. So we would not So we would not look to extend it. What we've done is within the mixed use, and I, and I don't know if whoever's running the PowerPoint can zoom in on the uses on the, you'll have to get out of this and pull up the cover sheet. But one of the things we talked with Mr. Fenton about is just because it's blue and says it's mixed use doesn't mean you can't do ninety percent of the uses that are in the Planned Business Park in that space. So it really, all that stuff in the MU could be an office park in itself. When you look at the uses on the use chart, that, I think it's on the cover sheet. Looks like you're in the right file. Yeah. I don't know if you can zoom in to that. I, I can't read that, but there's a list of uses. And, and this is what we talked with Mr. Fenton about is really, as I said, even though there is a defined Planned Business Park, which, which makes up those, you know, roughly ninety acres, there's really an additional one hundred and thirty acres, which could have a lot of the same similar uses. And to your point, Commissioner, in regards to retail, retail and office right now, there's not a person in the world that can tell you where that's going in the next five years. So we want to be flexible. We think it's imperative that those mix of uses are, are a part of this. But it's very difficult to, to pin down how much retail, how much office might be there. So the flexibility of that and even the flexibility of, you know, potentially vertical mixed use. But you can see right here in the, in the Planned Business Park, those uses, you know, offices, public buildings, research labs, essential services. Really what you lose if you can go to the MU uses, you know, in the MU use, uses, you're, you're permitted all of that office, business communication, financial consulting, food service, retail, medical office, research. What you really lose is from the Planned Business Park is the distribution component. And in talking with Mr. Fenton, I don't think that's necessarily the goal of the community is this is intended to be a little more research office. So our take is you could really make the argument that there's, you know, two hundred and thirty-some acres of Planned Business Park here that will have potentially retail and, and residential and hotels intermixed with that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ha. Any other questions?
I have one more thing.
Yes.
I'm not thrilled about the, the part where you wanted to make it less southern, less traditional looking because I think that's, that represents our area real well. I just, I'd rather it look like a southern, our southern town already does instead of just putting in a place that's really modern looking, that could be in any place in the United States or the world. But also I think what you were saying, John, was that you would prefer more of the mixed use versus quite so many of those single, of those residential. And I would, I would too, I believe, if that's what you were saying. Also, are those, are there, are these attached places? Are they, how many stories high would that be for the residential? Are they like apartments on top of businesses or are these apartment buildings? Are they condos or are they?
Could be. They, they could be every one of those that you just described. The way we're controlling those again is with a maximum height, which in the MU district is, is thirty-five feet. And that's, that's standard to the underlying zoning for, for MU. You see some of the details here in terms of materials and, and fenestration and so on that we've included in our PMDP some metal to encourage those along with how those are oriented. But really, our, our goal would be that all of those appear in this community where you may have residential above retail, you may have residential above office, you may have standalone condominium next to standalone, you know, a, a group of townhomes. Certainly, we know that in order to support the retail here, the rooftops will, will be needed. We've already had some folks kind of look at the site and from a preliminary standpoint say, we've, we've got to wait a little longer from a retail standpoint and, and a grocery standpoint. So having that proximity and making it walkable, again, helping with traffic is important. Now, the attached villas and townhomes, those are two-story maximum. The attached villas are in the active adult and the townhomes are in the traditional.
What is the price point of your average single family, single dwelling?
I thought I was going to get out of here without ask, asking that question, so thank you. What, what we've got is, the projections are for, for single, now, here's what I would say. First off is you can imagine what the market is in, in proximity to our site for all of these products. All of these products exist within Gallatin. Because of the mix of uses, the proximity to job centers, the proximity to neighborhood convenience and particularly the amenities that will be offered on a large scale, that there is going to be a premium. Our projections right now are for the active adult, single family, that that, those might start in the mid threes and go up to the five hundreds. The villas would be in the mid twos to the three hundreds. The traditional single family would be in the low fours to the mid, or low threes to the mid four hundreds. And then the townhomes would be low to mid two hundreds.
Okay. All right. Thank you for answering that.
Hey, John. Yes, sir. Go ahead, Dr. Organe.
I would like to encourage us to, don't, don't picket this thing too much yet. It's a really big project and the people who have put it together have spent, you know, you probably can't count the hours. Mr. Haas could probably tell us. And there's a long way to go and it's very flexible, so let's don't get into the details. If not, if we're not careful, we'll get in the bushes real fast. And they have a vision that is typically going to be much bigger than what our community vision is. And they see things all over the country and we don't. So let's try to be open-minded about this whole thing.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Organe.
We got plenty to, to, to make a pitch for whatever. So this is just the beginning.
And the, the goal for tonight is just to get an introduction to this and we'll see this back in a couple of weeks. So we'll, we'll have a chance to really dive into it and study. I am excited that, you know, one developer is able to do a master plan on this, but it looks good. Any other questions or comments before we move on? Seeing none, we'll move to item number four, I believe.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Item number four is Woods Crossing, formerly Woods Landing, Plan of Service and Annexation. Dustin, is this item four and five? I don't have a printed agenda.
It is, Mr. Chair, so I'll, I'll just do both.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dustin.
All right. So this is a rezoning, PMDP and annexation for Woods Crossing. As you can see, it's located south of town at fourteen sixty Woods, Woods Ferry Road. This is the parcel, kind of the center of your screen there. It's about twenty-eight acres. It's going to be brought into the city with this project. Okay, moving on to the actual plan. So this is for a hundred and twenty-two single family home lots. It's going to be rezoned from R40 and rural residential in the county to R8 PRD. And you can see most of it is in that part that's going to be annexed back, that back two-thirds of it. You can see there's several, there's three points for connectivity to adjacent parcels for future development. They've got a TBA easement running through the property that will be open space right of way. Here's the type of architecture that they're proposing. So far meets the brick requirements. But this is pretty preliminary for what they want to do. There's a drainage way that runs through the center of the property. We do have a few issues with the size of the buffer that we'll want them to address. Other issues just include a, a few things we need labeled. We do want to have the buffer yards completely separate from the lots. They kind of bleed over at, at certain points. And so we've, we've emailed these comments to them. One issue that might kind of be a sticking point was we would request that the realignment of Ferguson Road run through the western edge of this development. And I, I think the applicant would like to request an alternative to that, that long-range plan. So I believe applicant is here.
Okay. Before we hear from the applicant, can you help me get my bearings? Show me again the overall, where is this located?
So this is right off of Woods Ferry Road, just south of Nichols Lane.
Okay.
And just west of 109.
Very good. We have a representative for the applicant present.
Michael Dewey, I've unmuted yourself and Hillary, I've promoted you as a panelist so that you can present your presentation when the time's ready.
Great. Sure, I'll, I'll be happy to go first and then I'll turn it over to Michael. Let's see, let me share my screen. I'm hoping I share it as well as John did, so forgive me in advance if I don't. Okay, so I, I love, I love getting to be in Gallatin because y'all obviously know us well and we love, love getting to call Gallatin our hometown. So Woods Crossing, the, part of the theming and the name, we really wanted to tie in the overall surrounding area that is that, what I call that Peach Valley Road corridor going along Woods Ferry. There's a beautiful creek that runs along the property, so really wanted to take advantage of those environmental features. You all obviously know a good bit about us, I'll, I'll keep, keep going. But going back to the property, so as you can see, that, that beautiful creek kind of running along there, trying to keep our stormwater areas around, around, located around the stream and also trying to keep nice buffering. We're going to have a trail that goes along the stream that ties into the overall sidewalk, sidewalk network as well as, and part of what you see here, you see ninety-nine lots that are highlighted a bit more boldly. And then the remaining lots are in the future development part, and that's for a few reasons. One is at this point, we have one access into the property before this Ferguson Road extension is built. So we don't want to build any more homes than that until that, that extension is completed to meet those prior requirements. Secondly, I want to address the comment about the road connection. We had a pre-con meeting, it's been many months ago. So at the time, Nick, Nick Tuttle, I believe, I'm not sure if he's still on, recommended that this was the, the design of the road. So we're happy to revise that for staff's comment. But that was at the time, maybe things have changed in the meantime with how that road alignment will be. So happy to follow y'all's direction there and change that layout if we need to. And I believe, Michael, to kind of address any of the other comments, but, you know, the things about buffering going on into lots or, you know, those things, we can certainly clean up and are happy to do so. Michael, I'll quit sharing my, sharing my screen.
Mr. Dewey, are you there?
Yes. Hey, guys. This is Michael Dewey with Dew Engineering. We've looked through the comments and as Hillary said, we, we can adjust the buffer yard comment. That doesn't seem to be an issue, the, for, for the landscape buffer. The stream buffer yard, we may need to work with the stormwater with engineering on, on that particular comment. But the remainder of the comments, we, we're in agreement with and we can adjust the, the plans as, as necessary.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dewey. Did engineering wish to weigh in or any other department? If, if not, then do we have questions from members of the commission?
A quick question for Mr. Dewey. The, is that a TBA easement that bisects the property on that future development phase? Is that what I'm looking at?
Yes, sir. And it's per the survey and the, what they've, what they've discovered is it's a hundred-foot wide TBA easement.
Okay, so what's the, what's the road doing, where, you know, kind of the road goes and loops around there? What's the, what's the thought process behind that or is that, I guess, the roads in the easement or outside of it?
The road straddles the easement and it's, it would be a, a one-way loop with the grass median in the middle where the, the homes would face the, the grass median.
Okay. No, I like, that's a, that's a thoughtful way of dealing with it.
Thank you.
So I'll pose the question. I've been trying to get my bearings as to exactly what parcel of land. I've kind of pulled it up on Google Earth. We have, I can't remember the name of the Clear Lake Meadows Boulevard. Was aligned with Twelve Corners Nursery. Then we recently approved a plan to the east of Twelve Corners Nursery. Oh, thank you. That helps right there. As far as our master plan, we have proposed an extension of Clear Lake Meadows to eventually come south through this area. Does this plan allow for that or accommodate that in the future development phase?
Yes. I, I don't know if that's for me or for someone else, but I'll take a stab at it. That was one of the first, during our pre-app meeting, that was one of the first comments that was brought up by staff as they wanted us to make sure that we tied into that future Collector Road. And they needed the stub to be on the, on the west margin of our property. So that's where, that they said, as long as we stub to the west, that that's, that's where, where we would tie in, you know, our, our road would ultimately connect with the, with the future road.
Okay. That's, that's the only real question I had. Any other questions? Well, seeing none, then we'll see this back in a couple of weeks. Thank you for bringing it.
I just wanted to clarify that it is uncertain at this point and it's not, it's not shown on the drawing as to whether the Collector Road extension, Clear Lake Meadows Boulevard or Ferguson or whatever it ends up being called, is not shown on this drawing along the west portion of the property. But that's the intent of our discussion, previous discussions, is to have that alignment extend from north to south along the west boundary of this property. Probably will be, be in the Collector Road. And Nick, if you're on here, probably be in the neighborhood of at least eighty feet and width that would be needed for Collector Road. So there'll be some re, redesigning of that, of lots, drainage and that cul-de-sac that's shown there. So there'll be some redesigning of that, of lots, drainage, and that cul-de-sac that's shown there.
And I think, when we discussed this several months ago, Nick, I think at the time, this was going to, I guess that future extension was going to veer a bit more to the western side. And so I think at one point, we'd even proposed putting it, showing the road connecting through our property. But because of some of the development possibilities of the, or I guess limitations of the property north of us, that was not recommended at the time by staff. So if any of that's changed, we're certainly happy to do that and accommodate that.
Very good, well, if there's no other questions, then we'll see this back in a couple of weeks. Thank you for bringing it to us. So we're ready for item six, which is Twin Eagles Phase 15, a Plan of Service and Annexation. Again, that's items six and seven.
Yes, sir, this is annexation first, and then the master plan. So this is, this is an enlarged, fuller version of the Phase 15 of Twin Eagles that the Planning Commission did not recommend for approval several months ago. This is a 59-acre parcel that needs to be annexed. It's going to include 171 single-family homes in five phases. There's going to be four open space tracks and six public rights of way. It's going to conduct, it's going to connect to Douglas Lane in the west and to the existing Twin Eagles Street Network in the east. Issues with this, we've sent the applicant some corrections with regard to drainage easements and cul-de-sac size. We want to get some more connectivity into adjacent parcels and some traffic calming measures. And then again, we have the issue of having buffer yards within lots, so we'll want to clean those things up. Another thing we also want to require is that the Dottie Drive connection to Douglas Lane, you see on the left side of your screen, we want to require that that be built with the first phase, wherever that is, probably down here to the south, that that road and that connection be built before any more homes are built in Twin Eagles. So I believe the applicant is present.
We have a representative for the applicant present, please, go ahead.
Andy, your line's been unmuted.
Okay, thank you. So as Dustin had said, you all know that we deferred this project a few months ago, and this, what you see on the screen right here is what was turned in prior to that deferral. And the comments that we've received from the city, we have incorporated those in what will be resubmitted. So the connectivity, we have had hydraulic determination, the buffer yards and things of that nature for the aquatic features, all of that will be incorporated into the next, into the resubmitment next week, or this week, whatever, whatever that is. The only thing that we still are in disagreement with is extended Dottie Drive during the first phase. This project, you know, you guys as a planning commission voted it down several months ago. The reason we're coming back now, the first time we come back in was just the first 30 something lots. And obviously, it turned into a controversial project that we were not expecting. So now, instead of just putting 32 lots out there, or having the chance of it getting voted down in council, now here's the whole entire project, which we shared the entire project with Planning Commission the previous time. So the only reason we're coming back with it now, we just pulled the 32 lots off, and now it's just, here's the whole entire project, and this is all that it will be to get it voted on. But I'll be happy to answer any other questions. The client, or my client, still would like to not build Dottie Drive out until such time as he develops those lots toward Douglas. But other than that, we're in agreement with the comments.
All right, questions from members of the commission?
Yes, my first question would be just, the same concerns with Douglas Lane as before, is that road capable of increasing traffic?
We have provided a traffic study to Nick with the previous, the first submittal, which recommends some improvements at the intersection of Douglas and 25, and a few more improvements along 25. With the questions that were brought up about the road, we have, right now, we're in communication with Ms. Harden at the county. They are going to provide us their written recommendations, or either their opinion to resubmit. I did personally go out there and measure Douglas from one end to the other at various locations, and provided that to the staff. The road easily averages 18-foot the entire way, in some places over, very few places less. When I say less, we're talking about, you know, 17-foot 8 inches, 17-foot 9 inches at worst. And I tried to be conservative with where I chose to measure at, meaning I didn't kick leaves and grass to try to uncover more asphalt, or really try to measure what was there. So the road itself, I know there's been numbers as low as 12-foot thrown out. There is no spot on Douglas that measures 12-foot. There is a spot on Old Flynn Road, which is not really Douglas, it's very, very narrow. But I would not anticipate that portion being used, and that's to the east of this intersection, to the northeast. Most of our traffic is going to come out and go to the southwest, or come in from that direction as well.
Andy, how wide is Dottie Drive?
Well, Dottie Drive is a typical city street, so it will be the 24-foot, except where we have narrowed it down for traffic calming. And then it goes down to 20-foot, I believe.
Got you. So, question for, is somebody from engineering still on the call? Nick, are you still there? I guess my question, maybe somebody from staff could answer this. If Douglas Lane was a part of this neighborhood, would we allow an 18-foot-wide street to accommodate the traffic?
Well, I'll just weigh in, but that, you stated perfectly. My concerns are still about Douglas Lane.
It is, I don't have a problem with the rest of the development at all. My concern goes back to the traffic on Douglas Lane, and, you know, my biggest concern is we, if this, if somebody came and proposed an 18-foot-wide street inside of a subdivision, we would say it's not safe for vehicle or traffic. We are talking about adding all these lots with a connection to an 18-foot-wide street. So that's my biggest concern with.
No, engineering apparently is not on here. We do have streets that are narrow, that they have built subdivisions on, and St. Blaise Estates is one, St. Blaise Road.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, Aaron is on here now.
Yeah, sorry, I was having some difficulty getting my mic to work.
Go ahead, Aaron, I was just describing other locations in town where we have subdivisions that connect to narrow streets.
Um, sorry, while I was doing this, can you give me the question again?
Yeah, Aaron, so my question was, you know, if, would we allow an 18-foot-wide street inside of the subdivision?
I think per city standards, I don't know that an 18-foot would meet the fire requirements. However, with Douglas Lane being a county road, we would kind of lean on the county on meeting the expectations for, you know, their requirements for roadways.
Okay, so it wouldn't meet our city's requirements?
I believe the fire code lights having a minimum of 20 feet, if I'm not mistaken on that.
Okay, I appreciate you answering that.
Oh, Ms. Love, go ahead.
I believe that this was asked of Chief Williams when we were talking about it at city council, and he said that it would not be safe for his, for first responders with his fire engines or fire trucks to come down that way. It's not only a question of the road being narrow, which it is, and Judy Harden has told me that it's not going to be able to be widened. There's also at least three big, like hairpin turns there, too. And I just am against personally letting, providing an access onto that little narrow road for all of those hundreds of houses.
Yeah, and the fire chief did indicate that another fire station would be desirable if this development goes through, and his comments back to us.
Do we have any other questions or comments or concerns? Well, I think the purpose of this is to introduce us to it, or in this case, I think, Andy, you're looking for kind of a direction back from the commission before you bring it to us in a couple of weeks. I think I can summarize that everybody has the same concerns about Douglas Lane that they had before.
Yes, sir, and I expected that. I mean, this is just one of those things where we've got to get an answer to either move it forward or put it to bed, so I did not expect a different answer.
Okay, well, thank you. We'll see it in a couple of weeks then.
Yes, sir.
What's the, I guess we're ready for item number eight, which is Double Dog Shopping Center, amended preliminary master development plan and revised final master development plan. Jillian?
Yes, next slide, please. The applicant requests to revise the approved FMDP for Double Dog Shopping Center to add a covered bank drive-through on the west side of the strip center building. Next slide. This is the building on the Double Dog lot, but it's not the actual Double Dogs Restaurant. It's the secondary building. Some parking was removed to accommodate the new drive-through, but the parking requirements are still being met for the site. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. And the architecture is consistent with the building that's currently under construction. So here are your elevations, and next slide. And here are your drawings showing the layout as well. And that's it.
All right, do we have a representative for the applicant online?
If you are representing this item, if you could use the raise-your-hand function at the bottom of the screen, or if you are calling in, if you hit star nine on your telephone, it will let me know that you're here to speak. We have Aaron Arnold. Your line's been unmuted.
Go ahead, Aaron.
Oh, yes, I'm the engineer of record for this, or with Arnold Consulting Engineering Services, representing Double Dogs. I do not know if Dave Bernardo was on, I believe he was trying to call in, but I don't know if he was able to. But, so we're bringing this back before you, the tenant space to the west of Double Dogs. They've acquired a tenant, and it is a financial institution. And they would like to have this drive-through added. So we have brought this before you to request the additional drive-through there. It will be two drive-through lanes. We still have some parking, but as Jillian mentioned, we've removed some head-in parking that was against the building originally to accommodate these two drive-through lanes.
All right, any questions for Mr. Arnold or for staff?
I don't have any questions on this, it looks pretty straightforward, as far as I can see, unless staff has some concern with it.
Mr. Chairman, the only concern I have is the access to the dumpster at the northwest corner of the site. Now that they're repositioning their drive aisle, they are making that essentially a one-way drive aisle on the west side of the building, and to get access to that dumpster, truck would have to come in the opposite direction. It could also potentially conflict with the awning that extends out over the second drive-through lane. So if they were just to position that dumpster at, say, a 45-degree angle, similar to what they've got behind the restaurant further on the east side of the site, I think that would eliminate the potential conflict with traffic flow, and hopefully a truck wouldn't run into their awning either, if they.
Arnold, is that a change you can make?
Oh, yes, yep, we can definitely rotate that and make that change.
Good, well, if there are no other questions on this item, we will move on. We'll see that back in a couple of weeks, and we'll go on to item number nine.
Okay, can you hear me? This is Sharon Burton, okay?
Magnolia Street duplex, Phase 102, final master development plan. Go ahead, Sharon.
Yes, item nine, 10, and 11 are all being done by the same developer. You might want to just see them all at one time. They are all duplexes, it is some infill development on the, over on the, there are six zonings over on the north side of town. We have Magnolia Street, there's going to be a duplex, there's some of the surrounding neighborhood. Duplexes are allowed in the R6 zoning. It has to have a master development plan, just because it is, would normally have to have a PMDP, but these are existing R6s. And they're scattered across, we've got one on Magnolia, one on Randolph Circle, and one on Randolph Street. They're going to be, they're all small lots, they are undersized lots, but still in R6, you are allowed to have, it calls for 2,200 square feet per dwelling unit. And all of them meet that, though they don't meet in our, the actual 6,000 square feet, they do meet the others, so that they can have the duplexes. And we don't have any architectural plans, they are going to have to get those in. They will be required to have a 70% bricks or stone, or they may have to ask for an exception so that they're compatible with the neighborhood. And that's pretty much going to do it for all three of them. I don't know, I think the developer is, he was planning on being online, I don't know if he is or not, so.
Do we have a representative, or the applicant present online?
We have Jim Lambert, Jim, your line has been unmuted.
Are you there, Jim?
Pardon me, hi, my name's Jim Lambert, I work with TCO Engineering, representing MSI Homes. These are duplexes in an existing neighborhood. We are working with some off-site utility issues that were commented on, utilities. We're going to extend water to two of these from off-site. We're also going to have to do some off-site stormwater improvements. We're going to include all of that in our recent metal. We're also, Sharon mentioned, planning to include architectural elevations that show the materials. I have not seen those yet, so I don't know if we're asking for an exception. But I will know by Thursday. And that's about it, does anyone have any questions?
Questions from members of the commission?
How many, how many townhomes are we talking about?
There's three separate lots, they're not contiguous, they are in the same neighborhood. And each lot has two dwelling units, two. They are in the same neighborhood, and each lot has two dwelling units, two single townhomes on each lot.
Thank you.
Could someone give me my bearings again on this? Randolph Street, where is that located?
I think Magnolia is where the restaurant is, if that helps.
If you turn off of West East Line.
Oh, okay. You're right, that is Magnolia Street. Okay, any other questions? We'll see none, then we'll, we'll see this back in a couple of weeks. We'll move on to, I lost count. I think we're on item 10?
That was item nine, 10, and 11. It's three duplexes, I'm sorry, three separate projects, three lots, a total of six duplexes, or six units.
And they have to be voted on separately? Yeah, okay. All right, we'll move to item 12, which is 624 Davis Drive, a minor subdivision flat. Sharon, are you presenting this?
Yes, that's, that's me, too. Next pile. This is Davis Drive. We've had several proposals come up on it before. We know we have the one commercial, sub-commercial development that is going on, on the corner. This is to take the rest of those other three lots, all four lots, and it's going to rearrange the lot lines to make it into three lots, as you can see on this, this slide. This one's a little bit messy. Jason did send me another one today, but it hasn't, it didn't get on the slide, so. But it are, it is the three houses. They're going to be removed. I believe there is a commercial element in there. We don't have any plans on it yet. They do have one in access easement that's going to run along the back. I think engineer, they are moving some of the lot lines around. This one on the corner, they will have to have some easements recorded because they're going to share a, there is a two-way drive here, but one drive is on each property, so that was an issue to me, but they can do an access easement and make sure that's an agreement between the property owners or between the developments, that they're both going to use it. I don't know if anybody is here representing this one, or if there's any more questions, or if engineering is here, they may have some questions about it or some comments about it.
Let me add also that what we have now is a single developer who wants to combine these sites into one development site with three lots. So the original master plan for the portion now would be bisected by the westerly portion. So we, we need to look at an amendment to the master plans to be consistent here and to create preferably one single master plan that would demonstrate this lot configuration. And that can be done simultaneously with the plat, if, if y'all determine that that would be a major, a minor amendment to the master plans. So we have two, two master plans approved on these properties right now, and they don't show boundaries where they're proposing. Of course, one of them's already constructed.
I have to apologize. I, I had a distraction, and I don't know where we are, so. But you don't have, no, you don't have to zoom out and show me. I know where we are on the plan.
You bad boy.
Know what we're talking about. Well, I had somebody honking and pulling into the office.
Laying excuse.
Yeah, yeah, it is. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, quick question. So, is this proposing that the access into what is now the three residential properties would be through an access easement coming through the ones already constructed? So this would eliminate connections back to Nashville Pike?
I can jump in there if you want me to.
Yeah.
So this is essentially, the GBT final master development plan was submitted a couple of months ago, and you guys have already approved that, which, what we were showing was a, a ground lease here on the left, the westernmost lot, and then some retail and restaurants in the middle. GBT owns Shops at Payne as well. They developed Shops at Payne, they own that. And GBT is currently developing these other three lots. So the access that the city has been looking at since the very beginning is not changing. What you will have here, you know, obviously there are three driveways right now for each one of those residential lots. Those will be consolidated into a right-in, right-out on Nashville Pike, and then we have cross-access easements from the Bain side to the west and Shops at Payne to the east. So the overall concept of what you've seen on both master plans, Shops at Payne and what was submitted as GBT, has not changed in concept. As Mr. McCord stated, GBT, for their own internal reasons, are proposing shifting the lot lines for the Shops at Payne, and it looks like also maybe leaving a, another boundary lot over there, a lot to the west for where their ground lease is at. But in concept, nothing has changed since what you all approved with Shops at Payne and with the GBT development. This is just how they're tracking this up, I guess, for finances or whatever reason they have for doing it this way.
All right, thank you.
Doesn't that change the...
I'll go ahead, Dr. Orgain.
Doesn't that just change the whole structure of density for the area doing that? As far as having multiple lots as opposed to one big lot? And having six residences right there? No, no, we're not having six residents. There, there are three residences currently right there, and those are going away and it's turned into a commercial development. Is this the one that Mr. Horowitz presented something about the signs? Yes, sir.
Yeah. What was the resolution on that? Well, that's not applicable. That, that doesn't matter. That's the property we're talking about.
It is, but I think Josh might want to speak to the resolution on that. He and Jillian looked through the ordinance and found that we can be compliant and get what they were asking for all at the same time.
We can talk about that offline, Mr. Perrier.
Okay.
But you are correct, Dr. Orgain, this is that same development. Well, I hope the city changed their mind and let you have two signs, two monument signs.
Well, if there's no other questions, then we'll see this back in a couple of weeks. We're at item number 13, Sumner County Courthouse Parking Garage, final plaque. Sharon, are you presenting this?
Yep, that's me again. Oh, my voice is going, too. This is the, up here where the Galton Church of Christ is. We have, they have four parcels, and they're, the Sumner County Courthouse Parking Garage is looking to locate there eventually.
Sharon, I can, I can... Be glad to present.
All right, thank you, Bill.
I need to have the site, the plat shown. Let me kind of, this is property that's already in the downtown area and is developed as a parking lot known by the Church of Christ on the south side of Franklin Street. The applicant intends to sell a portion of this property that they have, they essentially have half a block to the county to develop a parking garage to support the new courthouse. The alignment of the lots that you see there show the bulk of the lot adjacent to Franklin Street, where there's a surface parking lot and a playground for a daycare center, and two appendages or panhandles that extend through the middle of the church property and one adjacent to an alley to connect down to Main Street, which will provide the pedestrian access to the courthouse from the parking garage. So the main thing that we need to look at here is that we want to ensure that the adequate right-of-way will be provided, if not already existing, to provide for sidewalks along the existing public roads, and that, the big concern there is a little walkway between the two church buildings themselves, and there's a structure or, I guess it's a covered walkway that connects the two buildings that stretches between the two properties. So one of the things that we're working on is to essentially eliminate the little appendage that cuts through the middle of the church property, and if, if need be, that they could provide just an easement there, and the church could retain that, but with a public access easement through the middle. So it would remain on the church property, just be shown as an access easement. If that's satisfactory to the church and to the county, that would be a better way of handling it. That way, the building stays on one lot, and you're not having the building bisected by a property lot. We don't believe that exists on the west side adjacent to the alley, and that would provide for an additional access for improving the pedestrian corridor between the parking lot and parking garage and the sidewalk along East Main Street. So what we'll also need is to formalize the sidewalk within a right-of-way in front of the church on the west side of the existing church. So there's a little cleanups that need to be done. It's really just a property transfer, but we don't want to bisect a building with any property boundary. So some of those options are what we're considering right now. This is not the site plan for the garage itself. This is just a property transfer.
I guess, is the applicant the city in this case, or is it the county?
The applicant for this project is the county, and I've got Randall, who is the project manager representing the county, and then Sean McGowan, who is representing the surveyor. Both of your lines have been unmuted.
Hey, everybody. This is Randall with No Box Development, Randall Coy. I am the, acting as the project manager for Sumner County, and we are acting on behalf of the Church of Christ, who still owns the property. This is part of the sale process, of course. The county, speaking about that, the property lines that go between buildings, the county's not going to want to give that up. The county needs to control that long-term to maintain that pedestrian access and not allow that to be sold in the future should the church decide to sell that. You know, they, they could potentially decide to sell that western property to a developer or another property owner, and the county needs to maintain that pedestrian access. That structure you're speaking of is a canopy structure. So we, it sounds like we may need to have some more conversation about that over the next couple of weeks. Certainly happy to do that. I'm not aware of any other comments, and Sean, you speak to this as well. I'm not aware of any other comments that would be any, any issue with the church or county, either one.
The only, the only thing, I, sorry, my 18-month-old came in here, and I just, I just moved her to the other room. And so if you spoke about the right-of-way dedication or not, but I know one of the comments was, was doing the right-of-way dedication and that it wasn't necessary, and, and I, I wasn't sure, but we've spoke with this, with the, with the church, and, and they've decided that, well, in the other comment that went with that right-of-way dedication comment was also if it wasn't right-of-way dedication, we'll do it as pedestrian access easements. And so on the north and the kind of northeast, and then also on that southeast section, the boundaries on the original deeds had boundary lines to the back of the sidewalk, and so we'll keep, we'll maintain the same boundary lines, but we'll, we'll, I'm going to remove the right-of-way, six-foot right-of-way dedication and make those pedestrian access easements. I just wanted to clarify that in case that was something talked about.
Questions or comments? What a great location for a parking garage. It really is.
It's going to be great for the county and city both, I believe.
Sure is. I don't know who to put this plug in, but, or where to pitch this, but sure would be great if there were public restrooms in this parking garage for the big fence we have on the square, just an idea. Any other questions, comments, or dumb ideas? The dumb ideas came from me. All right, well, being done, move on.
Thank you.
We'll see this in a couple of weeks. Thank you. Item number 14, the Goat Farm. Rezoning with preliminary master development plan. Jillian?
Yes, the Goat Farm is a proposed mixed-use development located on Nashville Pike Eats of Chute's Lane, adjacent to Highway 386 overpass. The development will include the proposed Sumner County Ice Center, and we do have a couple people here to discuss this item following my brief presentation. This project is also a bit more complex as it straddles the city limits boundary. The northern portion of this development is within Gallatin, and the southern portion is in the county. The county portion of the property is not within Gallatin's urban growth boundary, so it cannot be annexed into the city. So this development is, and this development is directly adjacent to the city of Hendersonville. So kind of a complex piece of property, but we as the city will only have jurisdiction over the northern portion of the property. That's where the hatch marking on, on your, the screen is, and the county will have jurisdiction over the southern portion of this property, which that portion includes the Ice Center. So please keep that in mind as you review the plans and the pattern book and everything for this item. Next slide, please. The applicant proposes to rezone 5.39 acres to MRO and a little over 26 acres to PGC, so for your commercial and your residential development in this area. This development will include various retail and restaurant parcels, an entertainment plaza with dining areas, food truck plaza, activity lawn, covered performance stage and screen, a hotel, and an apartment complex. These uses will provide support to the proposed Ice Center and recreation facilities, which are on the, the southern portion of this property. The PMDP includes requests for some exceptions, most notably for the height of the apartment complex and the hotel. Next slide, please. Going through these briefly, here is the area along Nashville Pike, which is for eating and shopping. This is where your retail and restaurants will be located. Next slide, please. This is what they're calling their entertainment district. This is where those uses that I discussed, the, the entertainment plaza, food truck plaza, activity lawn, things like that to support, for the support residential in this area as well, well as the other commercial in this area. Next slide, please. This is for hospitality. So this is the hotel, where the hotel is in the city of Gallatin. Most of its parking will be in Sumner County. It's, it's very close to that line to support the surrounding uses. Next use. And for your residential units along the eastern side of this property, they're actually adjacent to existing apartments in Gallatin. A portion of those apartments are in Sumner County, a portion are in Gallatin, and they would go right along that new proposed public right-of-way that's going through the middle of the property. Next slide, please. And then these are a couple of slides about the Ice Center. Again, this is Sumner County. We don't have jurisdiction over this portion, but they did include this in our information. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. And this is the, the breakup of the zoning, so the red, this will be updated to show with, the open space is what's not shown on here, but the red is your PGC, the orange is your MRO, and your blue is the PUD that would be part of the county. Next slide, please. Access points, having secondary access points onto Chute's Lane and into the city of Hendersonville with main entrances off of Nashville Pike. Next slide, please. Your pedestrian access breakdowns, which does include a 10-foot greenway along Chute's Lane. Next slide, please. And then, your open space, there is an existing stream buffer along Shoots Lane, and that will be preserved as required. Next slide, please. And then, your buffer yards, to make sure that we're providing those per the code requirements. Next slide, please. And then, just some brief signage that they are proposing. Next slide, please. And then, your layout, again, the applicant is here to discuss this item further, thank you.
Thank you. We have a representative from the applicant, please state your name for the record.
I have John Sexton and Kevin Kane, your lines have been unmuted.
This is Kevin Kane with Stratus Development. And I'll kind of touch real briefly on a couple of quick things, sort of the intent of the development, and then hand it over to John Sexton with Los Design to kind of get into the details of, you know, how everything works and everything like that. But, just a quick introduction to the goat farm. As reference, this is a unique property in that it straddles municipalities, the proximity to Vietnam veterans. There are also lots of site limitations and restrictions in terms of topography, streams and buffering and things of that nature. But really, the intent of the property from the get-go was to create a center within the county and specifically within the cities that kind of straddle the jurisdiction there, where, you know, folks that live in the community could congregate, also, you know, working through the ICE facility in particular, looking to draw some tourism up to Sumner County. Folks possibly coming out of Nashville and the surrounding areas to engage in our county. Everyone involved in the project lives locally, and it's really important to us to have these sorts of amenities that are a little bit different than what you might find in other parts of the county. But we feel like they're important in growing, you know, communities like Gallatin, like Hendersonville and Sumner County as a whole. So, that being said, I'll kind of hand it over to John Sexton again with Los Design and let him field questions. And if you have other questions that you want to direct at me, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
Thank you, Kevin, and thank you everyone for allowing us to present this. We're super excited about this opportunity to bring to Sumner County and the surrounding municipalities. This property is envisioned to be, you know, a regional destination that will attract athletic competition, recreation, hospitality, and outdoor entertainment. It's about 58 acres and it straddles Shoot Lane and Nashville Pike, about 1,600 feet on Nashville Pike. And we've got multiple entrances into the property, two off of Nashville Pike that you see on your screen to the north, and one, two off of Shoot Lane as well. We're also connected into Bond Road, which is the Hunt Club development off to the east. So, we're providing ample access into the property. We've done some traffic studies here since we've been studying this area to, you know, let us know what the impacts are going to be for this. So, we're in the preliminary stages, we have submitted that with our supplemental to the city. But, at the moment, we haven't got the warrant analysis yet to find out if it's going to be signaled or not. But, if you're looking at the property right there about the roundabout, and thinking there's going to be a ride-in, ride-out off of that, and the next entrance off of Nashville Pike would be that signal if it's warranted. So, as mentioned, we're super excited about partnering with the Predators. That facility will be located on the Sumner County portion. But, in designing this, this had to be one comprehensive master plan so that we understood that everything was working together, the traffic patterns that flies through the site, and the different uses that will be supporting the ICE Center as well as the entertainment district that Jillian was talking about. So, just kind of a visual, the way that we see it is, in those first few slides, Jillian had shown the seven, the six parcels along Nashville Pike, those are envisioned to be kind of a retail restaurant use. These would be trying to bring local restaurants into the area to, you know, provide something unique and fun for, you know, all the guests to, you know, come to. So, those would be right off Nashville Pike. We've got those set along our main right-of-way within the property, just to kind of create more of a pedestrian-friendly atmosphere within the core of this development. We know Nashville Pike's pretty busy, so what we're trying to do is push that parking out towards Nashville Pike and really create a really enriched pedestrian core and circulation through the middle. So that when families and visitors and communities that are adjacent to the property that come in, it's walkable. We're trying to remove the vehicular circulation and really focus on that walkable community. So, when people come to the property, such as the ICE Center, you know, that it'll stay at the hotel and they can walk to the ICE Center for events, but they can also enjoy the entertainment village that, the center that's right there in the middle. We're also providing some multifamily off to the east side along the Hunt, the Hunt Club neighborhood. We haven't envisioned that this is going to be a rented or a owned portion yet, but we're looking into that and we're further studying that. And also, one of the unique things about the property is, you know, we're keeping about 20% of the space dedicated to open space and not developing it. It's really unique because we have two large stream buffer corridors that are coming through. So, working with the topography and these large buffers, you know, it's allowing us to, you know, keep a relatively large open space program for this. So, the front portion, as I was speaking to, has the restaurant and retail component in it. As we go more towards the core, this is going to be more of that entertainment activity zone that would be programmed throughout the year. It'll have an open space lawn for, you know, activities to be, to happen throughout the week and on the weekend. So, you'd have college football game days and you would have movie nights and just activities throughout the year to help, you know, bring energy into the development. So, we're really trying to focus on regional pool for bringing people outside Tennessee to stay at this development, go to the Preds ICE Center, and keep all the revenue within, you know, this one piece of property. Right south of that, you'll have the hotel component. So, again, you know, when we have regional tournaments at the ICE Center, we can have people stay on property, spend, you know, their days at the ICE Center, and also, you know, get, you know, food and beverages from the local, right there as well. Further south, you know, there are two parcels there that, you know, we haven't programmed yet. You know, again, this could be more sports entertainment as well. So, that kind of gives an overview of the property. I don't know if Kevin wants to go any more into detail about it, but that's what we're thinking.
Thanks, John. I'll kind of hold off for now and let any questions that might come our way arise and answer those as they come.
Okay, I'll just lead off with really a question for staff. If I understand correctly, we're really supposed to only address our questions or comments towards that part that's up there in the city of Gallatin. Everything in blue that you're seeing there is county, is that correct?
We don't have jurisdiction over that area. Obviously, that's important to know for context for the rest of the development. But, any decisions made on our end will just be whatever's in the city of Gallatin. If it's in Sumner County, they will have to make the decisions for them, so yes.
Chairman, James Fenton.
Yeah, go ahead, James.
As is presented with this slide, a majority of the commercial is in Gallatin. I think it's important to note that, and I would ask the developers to chime in on this, but the process of development of this complete, you know, thing needs to be recognized in that they will be developing the ICE facility and the hotel and all of the infrastructure, that's phase one. This will not be like most of what we have been centered with. They are going to put in the infrastructure for everything, particularly the ICE facility and the hotel and the restaurants or the retail outlets on front before anything else is developed, and I think that's important to note.
Thank you, James. Questions, members of the commission?
This is Kevin Kane again, I'll just chime in on what James was speaking to. Yeah, I think that, you know, what he's trying to say here is oftentimes amenities tend to trail in the development process. And our intent on this project, like he was referencing, is to develop the site in its, you know, in its entirety on the front side. And that includes the vertical construction of the ICE facility. We're obviously working through the entitlements piece of the property currently. And so, that's why we're coming before Gallatin Planning Commission first with the county trailing after that. But, you know, it is important, and James is correct, in that, you know, really the focus here is the amenities and drawing the energy to the development through the amenities rather than, you know, focusing on, say, a residential or a commercial component on the front side and then eventually getting to the build-out of the amenities. We're using the facility itself to draw the drive and energy to the facility in its entirety.
Okay, thank you. Do we have questions from Ms. Love, go ahead.
I noticed Jack Anderson Elementary is right by there off of Shoots Lane, and I know that there are houses all back in there. Will that, will this impact the traffic on that road so much that it's not going to be able to handle it at certain times? Or do we know that yet? Has a traffic study been done?
We're in the preliminary stages of that traffic study right now, we are working through that. We've also looked back about five years to kind of get an overview of the area. And that impact study is, you know, taking into account Shoot Lane and all the entry exits off of that, as well as the two proposed exits off, entry exits off of Nashville Pike.
I am very excited about the project itself. Are the apartments on the Gallatin part, or is that in the county part?
Well, I mean, right now, they're multifamily. We don't know if it's going to be a rented component or an owned component. We're still in the studying phase of that. So, they are, they kind of straddle both that line, that imaginary boundary line that you're seeing. So, they are kind of straddling both, they are in Gallatin and there are some in Sumner County, yes.
I think most of us would encourage you to make those owned.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments?
You know, I read through this, I don't have really any questions at this stage, other than kind of reiterate. I'm excited to see this come to Gallatin and that the amenities are getting built to drive the commercial. I think we have a much better chance of getting the commercial aspect built with the ICE Center coming. So, I'm looking forward to seeing this as it progresses through. So, you guys have done a great job with it so far.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to comment, I think it's an exciting project. It's, I really look forward to diving into it, looking a little harder. My only question that I'll pose to the applicant is, it just seems like a problem down the road where the apartments are, the majority of the apartments are in the city of Gallatin, and then one, one building, I believe one unit, is outside of the city of Gallatin in the county. At least the county line doesn't bisect the building itself. But to keep things clean and simple, why aren't you applying for annexation for that small parcel of land so that all the apartments are one cohesive unit inside the city limits?
John, I'll handle that. So, kind of referenced on the front side, the county portion of the property is not actually in Gallatin's growth boundary. And so, Gallatin would not be able to annex that portion of the property. So, the apartment site itself, and the reason it does straddle that line is the topography kind of lends itself to a single phase of development, if you will, within that portion of the property. The way the topography, you know, undulates vertically, you sort of need a singular massing there to connect the roadways effectively.
I understand. I didn't realize that about that, that one unit was not in the urban growth boundary. That answers my question. Any other questions?
John, I can further expand on that. We are working with Emergency 911 and the municipalities to, you know, figure out the best method to make that application work. So, you know, as we get further on into the PMDP and FNDP, we are working through those items to make sure it works, sir.
Well, you read on mine, the 911 and EMS was the main concern I had.
Yes, sir, we're in talks with them now.
Okay, any other questions from members of the commission? We're seeing none, then we'll move along, we'll see this item back in a couple of weeks and we'll study it.
Mr. Chairman, if you are joining us as a member of the public, if you've raised your hand, this is not open to public comment at the work session. There will be a public comment period for this and several other agenda items at the planning commission meeting at the end of the month, on Monday, January 25. And you can, we will accept public comment before and at that meeting. But again, there is not a public comment on this item.
Thank you, Josh. I thought I had covered that at the beginning, but I failed to announce that. Thank you. Item number 15 is Tennessee Grasslands amended preliminary master development plan. Dustin, are you presenting this?
Yes, sir. So, as I stated, this is an amended PMDP for Tennessee Grasslands Golf Course Master Plan. As you can see, it's located south of Nashville Pike there, along Old Hickory Lake. This consists of three basic improvements. The first one is an event center added on to the Fairview Clubhouse. Here's the existing footprint. I mean, it's circled in red, there's the event, the 8,800 square foot event center that they want to add. A kitchen and an outdoor seating area are going to be on the southern end of the, of the building, added on. Here are some elevations and renderings. I don't know what that noise is. And here's some color renderings of, on the left side of your screen, that's where the event center will be. And then, on the very right side, you can see the outdoor seating area. Here's a view of the outdoor seating area. The, let's see, the second improvement area is at the golf training facility. Here's what's there now, it's a pretty small little building. And then, here's the new footprint. They're going to expand the golf training facility. They're going to add some parking and some golf cart parking. And then, they're going to put four tennis courts over here. So, they will have some grading to do and some buffering around those residential residences that are adjacent. The, okay, and here's the golf training facility, the new elevation. So, the left side of your screen, that's the addition that's being added in this entrance area. The other side. And then, here's the, for the tennis courts, they're going to have a tension fabric structure. structure for all weather play. So that's going to be over there. We are a little concerned about the height. We want to know what that is and make sure it's properly buffered. And then the third area is the Foxland Clubhouse. They're going to, they're going to do an event center. It's about 7,500 square feet. Here's what that will look like in elevation. It's on the left side here with the Dutch style raised parapet. And you can see a color rendering and used for things like weddings. That's what they've illustrated here. The main concern that staff had is with parking. They're not proposing any new parking for these uses. However, they are requesting the mix, the exception for mixed use parking because the new uses will be, have different peak times of use. So they're proposing that it will make use of the existing parking at different times of day. I would like a little more clarity on that from them and just some reassurance that what's there now is adequate. There are also some issues stormwater identified near the tennis court area that I, I'm sure they'll address, but I believe the applicant is present.
If we have a representative for the applicant, please state your name.
We have Michael Manis. Your line's been unmuted. And I know we have several folks from Reagan Smith. If you are speaking on this item, please raise your hand. My screen's lighting up like a Christmas tree. We've got Michael Manis. I'm guessing that's Brett Smith, George Welch, and Andrew Tarsey. Your lines have all been unmuted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Michael Manis with Manis Design. We do have representatives from Reagan Smith, I believe, also Sarah Stratton from Tennessee Grasslands. As Dustin indicated, this is, project is essentially providing additional amenities for the neighborhood as he has listed. And so I'll be very brief and let Brett jump in on any of the civil issues and be here to answer any questions that you may have. I did send a, a graphic analysis that we had done on the parking. I had talked to Dustin earlier about that and we've tried to graphically show peak times for the various uses. We have, of course, the golf functions, which are the main driver during the day. But we also have pool functions, the restaurant functions, and workout facilities. But again, I don't know if that graphic is available, but we did do some analysis of that to show where those peak times are different and to, we believe that the existing surface parking that's there is going to do multi-duty as the day goes on. And again, obviously, as the afternoon winds down, our, our golfers have left and that would be the time when the folks using the event centers would, would come on site.
I thank you. Do we have, you said you had several people who wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, this is Brett Smith. We were happy to answer questions. At the Planning Commission, we'll have Mr. Manis's graphic that shows the PM and AM parking peaks and counts. We have several comments from staff that we're addressing, but we glad to answer any questions. I also wanted to clarify, is in your, in your program, it's an amended PMDP and a final FMDP. We're doing both at the same time.
Thank you, Brett. Well, the plans are absolutely tremendous. Any questions, comments from anyone on the commission?
Yeah, my, my comment would be regarding the parking. And I, I look forward to seeing the, kind of the parking study on it. You know, we, I, I, I think it's the right approach since the different usage times. You know, there's, you know, we, we have things like Walmart. We have these huge seas of parking lots that just really aren't utilized. It's every maybe once a year during the Christmas shopping season, which, you know, we'll see if that even comes back. But, but I think the approach to the parking makes a lot of sense. And, you know, full disclosure, I, I'm a resident in the Fairview Plantation neighborhood and the architectural designs that you guys are putting forward look really, really good. So I, I look forward to seeing more of it.
Thank you, sir.
So I'll just raise a question for staff. If, if staff, obviously the primary use of this for people who live in the neighborhood, not entirely, but a lot of the people who will be using this facility are people that live right there in the neighborhood. So if we have parking concerns, if they provided, say, compact spaces, golf cart spaces, couldn't we take that into consideration that they satisfy their parking requirements because a lot of people will be traveling not by a conventional car, but by another mode of transportation like a cart?
Well, that's one thing I did suggest, Mr. Perrier, because we do have provisions in the code that allow you to reduce your parking based on things like bike spaces or proximity of transit. And I, and I told them that potentially in this case, Planning Commission could consider proximity to the neighborhood and proxy, you know, and golf cart spaces in a similar way to reduce, to kind of dampen that parking requirement.
I would think that would make sense. Other questions or, or comments? We're seeing none, then we'll, we'll review this and absorb it over the next couple of weeks and we'll look forward to seeing it back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Item number 16 is the, first of all, let me ask a question. How many more items do we have on the, I don't have a printed agenda.
We have a total of 19 agenda items and then two items for discussion.
Okay, so we still have four or five more items. It's been two and a half hours. Does everybody need a, a brief break, a restroom break? You need five minutes? Anyone? Other than me?
Sounds like we need five minutes then.
I'll take one, yeah.
If y'all want to keep going, Matt can take over, but I'll just, does anyone else want a break? Well then, Matt, if you'll take over for a moment.
All right, so I'll, I'll jump into item 16, 16 Tompkins Farm Phase 1B Discussion. Dustin?
Yes, sir. These are pretty simple, just FMDPs for Tompkins Farm, which is, which substantially matched the PMDP that was approved. So these are east of Old Scottsville Pike and southwest of Airport Road, as you can see on the screen there. This first one is Phase 1B, which is internal to what's already been approved and I think construction and constructed there. It matches the PMDP. It's for 25 single-family homes. Only issue we had, the PMDP was approved with open spa, with buffer yards in the lots and that's something we're trying to get away from. So obviously our comment is to take those buffer yards and put them in open space. I'm not exactly sure how that works with the PMDP already having received that approval. There, and there's also some water quality features that are within lots that definitely need to be taken out and put in open space. So the applicant is present.
All right. Representative for the applicant, comment? Do we have anybody for the applicant on the line?
If the last three of your phone number is 652, your line's been unmuted.
Okay, this is Andy. Can you hear me?
Yeah, Andy, we got you. Go ahead.
So we are looked over this today and we can put the buffers in open space and we've already taken the storm out. So when that goes back to everyone, we'll be in compliance.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Does anyone else have any questions or, or comments? It sounds like this will move through pretty easily. So, all right. Thanks, Andy.
Yes.
All right, so item 17 is same property, different phases. Dustin?
Yes, sir. Same, same story, same location. This is Phase 2, just to the north. And we had just a couple of issues with having those quality, those features within, within lots. And then an issue kind of with this, this ditch here to the north, but I'm sure the applicant is looking into that.
Okay. Andy, you got any comments for us, Andy?
Uh, yeah, we're, I think we're going to be able to address all the comments and be compliant.
Okay. So we, getting compliant, is that, are you able to move the water quality areas out of, out of the lots and give them into the, just into open space?
Yes, sir. We've done that.
Okay, good. Does that, how does that affect?
The lot, probably, big enough.
Pardon?
The lots they were on were big enough to put those areas in open space without getting below the minimum lot requirement or really impacting the building envelope.
Okay. All right. That sounds like a simple solution. Does any other members of the commission have any questions for applicant? All right, we'll see you none. We'll move on to see in a couple of weeks, Andy.
All righty.
All right. Item 18 is Windsong Phase 2A Final Plat. And Jillian, looks like you're up.
Yes, the applicant requests approval of a final plat for Phase 2A of the residential portion of the Windsong Master Plan. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. This includes 59 attached single-family lots, three open space tracks, and right-of-way to be dedicated. We are working with the applicant engineering department to address a couple of minor comments, but generally this does match what was approved with previous versions of the plan. Thank you.
And do we have a representative for the applicant? Which is to speak?
We have Chris Mayberry and Michael Nuttelli with Reagan Smith. Your lines have been unmuted.
This is Chris Mayberry with Reagan Smith. Basically what Jillian said, this is the first, first residential portion of the development that we're working on in Windsong. 2B will be the next item agenda. And for both of them, we're working to address the minor comments as Jillian stated. And we've been communicating with Jillian on, on some other issues as well that we plan on addressing those and then sending it back in.
Okay. Um, but for the most part, this is compliant with the, the preliminary plats that were approved, correct?
Yes, this matches the preliminary plat.
Okay. Yeah, everything looked pretty straightforward on, on this one to me. So, is, any other members of the commission have any questions or comments? All right, well, see you none. We'll see this back in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Then item 19, same, same property, just different phase, final plat. So Jillian?
Yes, the applicant requests approval of a final plat for Phase 2B of the residential portion of the Windsong Master Plan. This includes 79 attached single-family lots, one future development lot, eight open space tracks, and right-of-way to be dedicated. Same general comments from Phase 2A.
Okay. Representative for the applicant?
So am I still unmuted?
You are.
Okay. Yes, same, same comment as, as on the previous section. Minor comments, we, we plan on addressing those. Again, I spoke with Jillian on these things and, and agree to those.
I, I didn't have any other concerns or questions on this. Does any other members of the commission have any questions or comments for the applicant? No one? You back, John?
Sure. Other business, Andy's Frozen Custard.
Sounds tasty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are working with a potential development with the brand name of Andy's Frozen Custard. They've approached us about developing a, an, on an existing commercial lot along Nashville Pike. And we really, we've been trying to work with them on some of their brand standards and how it works, how it would be reviewed by our zoning ordinance. So what we really wanted to do was present the general concept of the building design, the building architecture and the lighting to the Planning Commission to get some initial feedback. The brand standards are very important to this individ, this particular business. So if Planning Commission felt comfortable, we would work with them to develop a site here in Gallatin. If the Planning Commission didn't feel comfortable with what was being presented, then we would advise the applicant accordingly and try and work their brand standards into our zoning ordinance or let them know the Planning Commission's decision and call it quits for the project. So what you're seeing is their prototype building. And Dustin, if you go to the next slide, this is what an, what an actual example of the site would look like. It is a walk-up restaurant. You'd park in the parking lot and walk up to the windows to order. It's not even food. They have, it is custard and ice cream only. There's no hamburgers, there's no french fries. It is just ice cream. But the primary issue that we're focusing on, next slide, please, Dustin, is the, the banding across the overall building. Our zoning ordinance, we don't see a lot of buildings like this that are developed like this anymore. So we don't have a lot of precedent to go off of. We wanted to get the input from Planning Commission on the overall building design, building type, and sort of what you're, get some reactions to what you're seeing in front of you. The closest one that we have in middle Tennessee is in Murphysboro. So we, we haven't been able to get a whole lot of firsthand experience working with this brand. But this is, this is their general prototype when they're open. They do close usually around 10 o'clock in the evenings. And you can see some, some of their signage isn't exactly what we would approve, so we're working with them on that. But primarily, the neon lighting, neon light banding around the building roof is what we have the most concern over. But again, where this is being proposed, there is no residential in front of, behind of, or next to. So we would not, we would avoid some of the problems that we have seen with other developments along Nashville Pike. So with that, I will stop talking and get input from the Planning Commission.
Well, I'll lead off by saying that if I, and my kids were at the beach, I would go there in a heartbeat. That's a cool-looking place, but no, I don't think it fits with the architecture of Gallatin at all. The neon lights, the high-intensity lights, no. Wanted opinion. Others?
Yeah, I would kind of have to second, second your opinions, John. I, you know, it, it looked like something I would, you know, take the kids to on, you know, down in Destin or something. But to have that, you know, on Nashville Pike, just doesn't seem like it would fit in with the architecture, the character of the area that we're trying to, trying to move towards. And, and really, it's, it really is probably, for me, the, the neon, the neon light banding that would be the least desirable of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Others?
Yeah, same for me.
That was Alana?
This is Alana, yes.
I can agree with you all. And secondly, is it seasonal or is it year-round?
It would be a year-round business. They'd, from talking with the development team, they do offer seasonal pies as part of their ice cream lineup for the colder months around the holidays. But for the most part, it is, it is, it is very much the same. But for the most part, it is um, it is, it is very much the same year-round.
Yeah. There's a, uh, business in the same um area as Walmart that was a hamburger place. And I want to say an accounting office moved in there, and I don't know what it is now, but it has a very bright facade, bright red, not unsimilar to this. Um, you know, that, that's in place already. I'm not sure what that business is.
I think you're talking about, I think it's the advanced financial centers right there, kind of in the parking lot, Chick-fil-A and then?
Yep.
Yeah, it's a, it's a advanced financial, it's a, I guess a, like a title loan, check cashing type business, I believe.
Yeah, so this one is more sort of over the top than that one, but, you know, we went, we, we forced the hamburger people to be more subdued. And then this other place came in and took it and really jazzed it up. But not that that's a good thing, but we already have some of that coming into, to the city.
Yeah. But I don't, I'd, I'd love to see this come to the city, you know, I don't, I don't object to the, there you go. I don't object to the colors of their, their signage or the building, I just, it's more the, the bright neon lights, I think, I think.
That's a great picture, by the way, right there, yeah.
There it is. Yeah, I think the difference on that, Dr. Organe, is it doesn't have, you know?
All the neon.
All, all the neon, you know, lighting it up at night, I mean, while, you know?
My frustration with that got me kicked off the planning commission about, I don't know, fifteen years ago. Uh, O'Charley's. You know, when um the steak place came in, they wanted all that bright neon. I, I didn't think it fit the neighborhood at all.
Yeah, I believe O'Charley's does have a strip of neon. Uh, there may be a few other places in town, uh, Longhorns across the road. Uh, we, we could try to uh pull together some examples of where we have neon. But I don't think we have any place that's, has as much neon as what we saw there in the Andy's Frozen Custard drawing or, or photograph.
Dustin, can you share your screen again? Uh, so from the planning commission, I'm hearing that the, it is the neon banding across the um top of the canopy that's drawing the most attention. Can you go back one slide, Dustin? Actually, maybe two slides.
Yeah, so that, that slide during, during the day, the, the aesthetics of it aren't, you know, actually, it's got a, it's got a good appeal during the day. It's the, the nighttime look for me, anyway.
We need to be careful of that incandescent lighting, uh fluorescent lighting underneath the canopy at night to make sure that the light goes down and not out. Um, I don't know what the technical term for that is, but the next slide, you could see that from a half mile away, right there. If those, it looks like those lights are beneath the surface of the ceiling, which is really not a good thing.
Rick, I was just about to mention those lights, too. They, they shine, it looks like, just as bright as the neon.
Yeah, we get snookered, we've been snookered a lot in the past, uh, mostly with gas stations and their um canopy lighting that you can see from really a mile away. So I hope that we have limitations in place that, you know, whether they had shielding or whatever, that they need to keep that lighting straight down and not out on the street.
Um, did they, did they have a specific location in mind? I mean, it's possible that it might fit in, in certain places in the city. In general, I'd be able to do it at night.
They do have a specific place in mind, but I specifically agree that I would not um release where that location is. But it is along Nashville Pike, it is entirely surrounded by commercial, so there is no uh residential homes within uh, I, I'd say at least a half mile of this location. but the, the brand standards with the neon lighting and the wrapping of the, of the roof was uh, was a concern that was brought up. And it um, it sounds like it's a continued concern from the planning commission.
Yeah, I think if the objective was they wanted to get kind of a feel before they committed resources and dollars to going through the process, uh, tell them it's, it's possible that in the right location, it might fit in. But without knowing the location, I can't really, can't really say. So it's a general feel, no, it just doesn't seem to fit with our community architecture and the community character. It's a cool location, it's a cool idea, and I understand why they're sticking to their branding. But I don't think they've gotten a favorable uh response tonight.
Okay, um, I will share this with their development team in the morning and uh we'll see wha, how they want to proceed. Um, or if there's any, any leeway about the overall design of the building, uh, specifically with the neon banding of the roof.
I, I will mention, without divulging the location, it, it, it would be very close to another business in town on Nashville Pike that has uh a lot of lighting, let's put it that way. So, okay.
Okay, it's like the game of Clue. Um, what are, yeah, amended uh Gallatin Municipal Planning Commission bylaws.
So as um, we are going through the process with the state to uh abandon the regional planning commission, we're also spending a little bit of time to update our planning commission bylaws. Um, and we're hoping to have a little bit more information for you today. But we're still very much in the drafting process of looking at our bylaws and seeing if there's things that we can do to give the chair a little bit more um leeway to encourage applicants to move their presentations along um to fit within a, a narrow constrained timeframe, so that for a twenty agenda item, or a twenty item agenda, we're not still here talking about it at seven forty-eight PM, as much fun as this is. Along with some other minor update changes about uh procedures and um consent agenda and a few other things.
Well, we'll look forward to uh reading through those when, when you get them out in the, in the, in the pack. Um, do we have any other business to cover?
Oh, sir.
Right, well, um, Linda, I will remind you that we have a sworn oath that you wouldn't quit after tonight, so.
Oh, uh. Uh, there is one more thing. Um, we are going to be having a new planning commissioner starting uh within the next couple of months. His name is CJ Morell, and he has been very quietly and patiently hanging on through this meeting. Uh, so even though he is not officially on the planning commission yet, he did want to join the meeting tonight to um get up to speed. So CJ, I'll let you introduce yourself, you've been unmuted.
Yeah, thanks, Josh. Uh, like you said, I'm CJ Merle, uh, and I'm looking forward to joining the planning commission and serving the city of Gallatin.
We look forward to having you, CJ.
Absolutely, CJ, look forward to having you and for replacing me as the new guy.
Thank y'all so much.
Yes, CJ, this is Bill McCordham, the planning director. I left you a message on your phone, uh, guess Friday? If you can give me a call, I'd like to speak with you.
Sounds good, sorry for, uh, I haven't returned your phone call, but I'll do that tomorrow morning.
All right, thank you.
Well, if there's um no other business to cover, then we'll reconvene in a couple of weeks. Thank y'all. Have a good evening.
Thanks, everybody.